Alright everyone, it's 7:00 PM so we're going to go ahead and get started with our program this evening. I'm Debbie Clark and I'm the publisher of the Willets News and I would like to welcome all of you to tonight's Candidates Forum for Willet's City Council. Your, um, this evening, your program sponsors are the Willets Chapter of the American Association of University Women, we have Well, Little Lake Grange, Willets Chamber of Commerce, and the Willets News. Your moderator this evening will be Sheriff Tom Allman and your facilitators are Barbary Gonzalez, we have Nancy Simpson, and April Twedell. We're going to do our program this evening being taped by Willets Community Television and they will be going ahead and putting that up streaming on willetstv.org for you to be able to see streaming or watch there for when they will be able to broadcast it on television. So we're very fortunate to have them here with us this evening, thank you very much. Um, our program tonight is going to be in two parts and in the interest of time, we are not going to take an intermission because we are running from 7 until 9. So what we will do in the very first part of the program is we have some preset questions that we have gathered from all of the sponsors and from feedback from the community. We will ask each of the candidates to answer all the question and they will have 90 seconds to respond. In the second half of the program, we have been gathering your questions and if you haven't had a chance to fill out a card, please do, we'll gather those and select from those questions and provide them to Tom to ask in the second part of the program. The candidates will each start with 90-second opening statements and then about 8:50, we will go into closing stage and they will also have 90 seconds for those. So Sheriff Allman has a few things to say and then without ado, we will start with our candidates. And our candidates this evening are Bruce Burton, Victor Hansen, Morris Kaplan, Holly Madrigal, and Madge Strong. Welcome to the forum.
Thank you. (applause)
Thank you all for being here, because believe it or not, this is not the only debate tonight.
(laughter)
So you're right, so I really appreciate you being here and thank you candidates for stepping up to fill elected local positions. It's one of the most important things we can do as citizens. I think we should follow a couple rules and I want to discuss those with everyone. First of all, we are not going to allow personal attacks. This is going to be a very upbeat debate and we're going to talk about issues. We are going to stay on topic. When the question is asked, you're going to have 90 seconds to convince the voters why you have the best idea and best answer for that topic and we're going to stay on time. And if you go over the time, it's clearly going to be stated that you went over the time and you'll be given time cards so you'll know if you're going over time. Thank you Barbary for doing that and to the, uh, the audience. Stop, that was to me. And to the audience, in the interest of saving time, I would ask that we're going to hold applause till the end. We can have applause at the opening statement, the 90 seconds that each candidate has. We can have applause at the opening statements, but for the questions, once we get started, the next round of applause will be at the closing statements. So thank you for understanding that. So we've, through the courtesy of the Willets News, Lyndon Williams, we've drawn numbers of who's going to go first, but before we get to the first question, we are going to start with a 90-second opening statement of whatever you want to say candidates. So we're going to go from your right, my left. Bruce Burton, you're going to start with your 90-second and then the first question will go to Victor Hansen.
Well, good evening. I really am surprised to see this many people here because I thought the presidential debate was actually pretty entertaining. I thought they were kind of going nose to nose. Uh, my name is Bruce Burton. I was born, almost born, and raised in Willets. I was raised in Willets. My family moved here in '49 and through the luck of the draw, my mother was in Oakland, so I was born in Oakland. But my family has been here since the late 40s and the, uh, they raised their family here. My sister, two sisters and myself went through Willet's schools, graduated all from Willet's High. And I went on to UC Berkeley and got a Bachelor of Science degree in forestry. Came back to Willets in 1972 and went to work out on Eden Valley Ranch for several years in the cattle business, running cows for private contractors out there. And in 1975, I moved back to, moved into town and started my own business, which was a little portable sawmill business. And going to different ownerships around, it's actually become somewhat common here in the last 15 years to see that around, but it was pretty uncommon then. In 1980, I started a mill in a permanent location and now have a mill on, uh, business over on Franklin Avenue. You know, the, oh wow.
(applause) And you're more than welcome to finish that in your closing statement. Victor.
My name is Victor Hansen. I came to Willets here 30-some years ago. Before then, I lived in the Bay Area. I was born in Southern California. Was served in the military, was 1960, 1950. You know, I'm nervous up here, but I've never seen such a crowd like this, but anyway, I was in the military from 1956 to 60 and then got out, went to school, graduated, got my contractor's license in 1964. Been in business ever since and I don't need to use the whole 90 seconds.
Okay? Thank you. Morris.
A practical matter, I'd like a different chair up here. If that can be done right now.
He's wondering if he can get a chair without arms on it.
Okay, we can take care of it.
Hey.
Doesn't count on these 90 seconds.
Okay, and your 90 seconds hasn't started yet.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead.
I'm going to be a lot more comfortable. Um, I guess I'm a little Johnny come lately here to Willets. I came here in October of 94 and, uh, I was looking for a home and I had an acquaintance here who was practicing Chinese medicine and she invited me to come and work with her here in Willets. Can you hear me? So, um, I moved to Willets and started practicing Chinese medicine and being part of the local My path to Mendocino County though, started earlier than that. I actually came to Mendocino County in 1976 when our Buddhists Association purchased a city of 10,000 Buddhists. And this story is going to have to take another, uh, time to tell. That's, that's going to be it for now.
Well, I'm Holly Madrigal and my strength on the City Council is one of community engagement and facilitation. As you can imagine, we have a lot of differing viewpoints up here on the council and in the community and what we need in council members, I think, are people who can work with a group of differing viewpoints to get things done. And the community engagement of that is important because times are tough and I think they're going to be getting tougher. I don't see, you know, an easy path forward and over the next term, City Council term. So I think the community engagement portion of that is really important when it's going to come to getting volunteers from the community to help us with our load. Because as a government organization, we are just having to pare down and, you know, keep an eye on the budget and get infrastructure things done, but we also want to make this an incredibly wonderful place to live. So we're going to need partnership with the community to make that happen. So I want to thank everyone for having us here tonight. I'm nervous also, even though we're up here all the time. I am also surprised to see this many people. And where are you guys when we're making decisions on streets? Anyway, thank you all for coming out tonight.
I'm Madge Strong and I've been in Mendocino County for 19 years. I've been in Willets for nine years, so I guess I'm even more of a newcomer here, but I feel totally that this is my home and I totally want our community to be thriving. And that's why I'm running for City Council. I have a lot of background. I worked for over 30 years professionally as a land use planner. I dealt with budgets, with economics, with land use decisions, with zoning, all of these things that I think will serve me very well if I'm on City Council, that I'm able to deal with complicated information. And I also want to just agree with what Holly just said, it's very, very important to me that we involve the community and that we come up with solutions that are common ground. And I think I can work well with people both on the council level, with the city staff, and with the community. It's something I feel is extremely important towards the forward-looking kind of things I would like to see us accomplish here in the city. I think we can do even better than we're doing now, especially given the tight economy that we have and we need to pull together. And I think I would love to be able to serve in that capacity on City Council. I just want to say also, this is the first time I've sat up here and it's a little strange and I want to promise that I will not consider myself above the rest of you. Just because I'm sitting up here during City Council, I really am going to be open.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you very much. And so just remind the audience at this point, the next round of applause you'll hear is at the end, closing statement. So let me, uh, let me tell you how the questions are going to go. We initially have six questions with some follow-up and then we have some questions that have been submitted and that we are going to try to consolidate so we don't duplicate the basis of the question. I'm going to read the question and when it's your turn, if you would like for me to reread the question, I'll be happy to. Otherwise, I would like for you to hear it the first time through and think your thoughts. The question, and Victor, you drew the short straw there. What is the most important thing you can do as a member of the City Council? Victor.
Most important thing? I'd be open-minded, try to balance as much as I can, listen to people, and pay attention. I really think that they're important in District. Police?
The microphone.
Okay. Can you hear me out there now?
The microphone doesn't work. The microphones are, they speak louder.
Okay. I'll speak louder then. Anyway, uh, you know, police are important, fire departments are important, roads are important, all of the basic needs of this city. That's what I strive for first.
Thank you. Morris.
Is this a 90-second reply?
No, you get 90 seconds to your response to what is the most important thing you could do as a member of the City Council?
Well, as mayor, the most important thing I could do would be to bring ping pong to Willets. And I'd like to be referred to as Professor Ping Pong if you don't mind. And what I mean by that is bring recreation to Willets in a way that we have never seen, that we really need in this town. And not only through ping pong, but ping pong is a primary activity that I'm promoting, but also the engagement that we need to have amongst ourselves with all of our governing bodies. And as mayor, and if I was sitting up here, anybody who would come up and address the City Council, I would give them some feedback right then and there. And the past, what I've gotten from the City Council was just, well, our policy is we will not respond, so thank you for your input. And to me, that's not sufficient.
Thank you. Holly.
The most important, there's a lot of important things, but I think the most important thing is to provide leadership. We're elected by the community and as I mentioned, I work really hard to be accessible and open to the public to make sure that people feel like they can come and talk to me if they have something they want to discuss. But what I mean by leadership is that we often have to make some not fun decisions. I'll put it that way up here. And I think we need people who are willing to make those hard decisions, stand behind them, and try to use the resources of our community to get as much information as you possibly can before you make that decision. And I agree with Victor, remaining open so that, one of the things I respect most in my fellow council members is keeping an open mind. Someone may come in here and stand at the dais and it's not easy to do that, to get up and speak publicly, and they may change my position, but I think that thoughtful leadership is one of the most important things we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's hard to pick just one, one thing. Openness, I agree, is very important and involving the community in the decisions that we make. The one thing that I think I am strong in and that I think we could use more of is a little bit of long-term planning. Because I think there are things that we could be doing now that would be paying off in the health and well-being of our community over the number of years if we plan a little farther ahead instead of only or primarily just dealing with the crisis of the moment. So I would want to bring that to the City Council and to our deliberations is where are we heading? Where do we want to be in five and 10 years? How can we invest in the right things to do now that will get us there? And I think we can do that better. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce.
I think that the most important thing we do up here is build public trust because there are times when we need to spend public trust. And those are the decisions that Holly's talking about that are not popular decisions. It's not just about making popular decisions. It's about trying to make the right decision for the community. And so I think you're able to do that and you're able to sustain it by building public trust in between those periods of time. And those are the other three years that you sit up here when you're doing the business of the city, which is not to a full room. It's not when there is a crowd full of people here on a single issue that want attention for their street or whatever. But it's building public trust and that is built through fiscal responsibility and it is built through making decisions in a, you know, open forum and being available to the public to take input. And so I think the issue of building public trust is our core job because there are times when we're going to have to spend it and we're not going to have people happy with every decision we make.
Thank you very much. Next question goes to Professor. What should the city government be doing now to prepare for post-bypass Willets?
Well, I think the city government should have been doing all along, um, building the infrastructure to take care of the needs of the community in the city. And what I'm talking about is recreational needs that are not merely, you know, passing the time, but there are actually places where community gets built with young people having a place where they can go to play ping pong, because I love ping pong and it has so many benefits. It can be played by old and young at the same time. But these places can be educational, physically educational, nutritionally educational, health educational, and by having places like that, that young people can go to, safely go to, have activities that are beneficial for them, you start building an infrastructure where people are living in the city of Willets and they're feeling good about living in the city of Willets. Because there are things that they can do and they see things going on, they're actually making the community, you know, richer, as a, you know, more beneficial for the people that live in the community.
Thank you. Would you like a question again, Holly?
No, I've got it. To prepare for post-bypass, um, Willets. First of all, I hate to say I'm still in the "I'll believe it when I see it" camp, just because I was raised here in Willets. You know, I've been here, well, born in '77 and it still hasn't happened. But I think the primary focus for the city needs to be financial. During the construction, there's going to be a bump in the, in the money that's flowing around town, but many of those jobs, I would say the majority of the jobs are not going to be local jobs. So there's going to be people spending money at our hotels and things during the construction period, but as soon as that bypass opens, we're taking a certain amount of, we're taking the pass-through traffic out that will be going north. I still think we're going to have a traffic problem, so I think that is sort of a two-pronged approach. We need to sort of think ahead on how we're going to encourage people to exit the freeway to come here. The way I think we should do that is by supporting our local businesses, not just retail and restaurants, although I would love more restaurants because that'll get people off, but we also need to support the manufacturing sector, the job sector, so that those people can have income, the locals can have income to spend to support our town. Anyway, I, there's more I would love to say on that, but I think that my time is up, so I'll.
Thank you very much. Madge.
I also will believe it when I see it and there are certainly going to be challenges during the construction period, but assuming that the bypass happens, I think one thing we have to recognize is traffic is still going to be a problem. Most of our traffic problem is the local traffic, plus we're still going to have a lot of traffic coming through to go to Highway 20 in both directions, from the north, from the south, from Highway 20, because there is no Highway 20 intersection with the bypass. So a high priority for me is to address our local traffic issues. I think we need some alternative routes. I think that that's in our power. We, as the city, can address our own issues and prioritize that. One of the high priority things that I think everyone up here probably agrees with is trying to get the railroad avenue to Bechtel Road connection. That would really help a whole lot. I also think we need to be building our job base and encouraging Willets as a destination spot. I think the Connecticut Carnival showed that that's one of the ways we can do that and I think it also ties in with creating more local jobs. Things that we can do, building our youth skills and everything that we can do as a community to, to encourage and support. The increased job base will be very helpful in the post-bypass Willets.
Thank you. Bruce.
Post-bypass Willets. I believe that the, the public sees Main Street as, down, as Willets, but the driver of Willets and the economy of Willets is not based on Main Street. It is based on businesses off of Main Street. And businesses on Main Street will prosper if the businesses off of Main Street prosper. If they don't, and we simply rely on travelers and people coming through town to be the economic driver of this community, I think that's a mistake. You know, so what I believe that we try and do here at the city, I believe we're consistent and we do it now, is I believe we are a very business-friendly town. You come, you, you come to the city with plans for a project, a building, a business license, and you get, I believe, very swift treatment and positive treatment in the city. And I think that's the key to a post-bypass Willets, is maintaining that consistency and having a business-friendly environment where we can, people that are from here feel comfortable in investing in the community off of Main Street and when they make the money off of Main Street, they'll come spend it on Main Street.
Thank you. Victor.
You know, this, this, excuse me, this bypass has been going on for years. In 1988 to 1992, I was on the council then and we started the downtown revitalization at that time and we started just thinking about what's going on. We also started the, the, oh, I can't think of the group.
Facade grant?
No, and we did the facade grant, we did a lot of things. We also, we got the, look, I keep losing it every once in a while. We did, we did start doing a lot of things. We got skate park going, we got Roots of Motor Powers going. We are thinking definitely about the post-bypass. I think it's imperative that we do and I, I think that it will be, it'll be hard at first, but eventually it'll smooth out and I think that if we do get some businesses in here, they should be clean businesses. Some, that's it.
Thank you very much. Holly, this is for you. Local businesses are still struggling through the effects of the Great Recession. What can the city do to help them and to encourage new business growth?
As I mentioned, I think that's really important, not just with or without the bypass, I think that's an important thing. I think that the City Council, even though we don't have a lot of money to put into economic development programs, I think we can do a lot of work. One of the things I mentioned, which was facilitation. We could meet with, there's a handful of primary businesses or primary employers in the city of Willets right now. I think we need to make sure that they have everything that they need. There could be, we might be able to facilitate some sort of group purchasing, group training. I know I've spoken with the folks at Micro Four who are very interested, they do a lean manufacturing and they're very interested in getting trainers that normally they have to send all their folks down to the Bay Area to get, to get these trainings to improve their manufacturing methods. They would like to partner with Mental Effects and, and get more bang for their buck. We could help facilitate those sort of connections as a government body. Right now, we don't have money for the facade grant, that was really nice to let businesses use, but one of the ways we could do it is, that we've done before, is a celebrating a business, you know, a business of the month that's doing it on their own. Give the encouragement of our government to the existing businesses to help them thrive.
Thank you. Madge, any questions?
No, I, I think I've got it. I've been very active on board of Willets Economic Localization for the last six or more years and one of the things that we're doing as a private nonprofit group is trying to find ways to encourage business and investment, local investment. So I just went last week to a conference that was all Mendocino County, trying to find ways to encourage economic development in this county. And there were some really good ideas and there were a lot of very knowledgeable people who are going to continue to meet. And one of the ideas is to meet with your primary employee, employment base in your community and see where you can support them and what kinds of spin-off businesses might be generated by them. Buying local isn't only about consumers, it's also about businesses buying local. And that just has an incredible multiplier effect. So I think that working with people like the Economic Development and Finance Commission and working with our local community and our employment base now, we can do that and I think also everything the city can do to encourage sustainable, healthy, living wage jobs is high on my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce.
Could you, could you recite the question?
Yes. Local businesses are still struggling through the effects of the Great Recession. What can the city do to help them and to encourage new business growth?
It's a good, great question, I guess. I, I think that, first of all, the city has, and government in general, I've never had the perspective that, that government creates jobs. Government spends your money. And the first thing that I think they do, they need to do is make it, and I believe we work this way in the city, is we need to make this a friendly environment for people that want to work. But I've sat on a number of, of panels that talk about how do we create jobs? Well, that's sitting there saying, how do I get you to do something? Well, I think the answer is, is why am, why aren't I doing something? Why, why sit up here and project it that it's somebody else's responsibility? If you can't see it yourself, why you're not starting your own business or starting your own job, then, then where do you expect to go with it? You know, it's only a good idea if somebody else does it. I think that's the, a big change I've seen in Willets in the last 50 years is that people that were here before started their own businesses and they couldn't wait to start their own business. Now we try and talk each other into Now we try and talk each other into starting a business, and they're not doing it ourselves. I think the answer is within each one of you to start your own business.
Thank you.
Victor. You know, I look at, we're building a school right now, and we're using local folks to work here, and, you know, all these people are right with what they're saying. I mean, I think that it is up to the people, though, primarily, to start their business. I've been in business for a lot of years, and it's, I've done very well. And I think to spawn people, to make them do a job out there, that's tough. But if we do get jobs here in the county, you know, like schools and the hospital, as much as we can use the local help, that's going to, that's going to help us, you know, the local people, the local contractors. That's going to help. But I, you know, we've been up here for a lot of times. If people ask us that question, it's how can we get more businesses here? Because if they do come in here, fine, but there are so many restrictions now to doing something. There's so many laws that you have to do in order to do the job. And the one main thing that I think about is the schools. How much money does actually goes to the schools, and how many goes to all the inspectors? All of the laws that are pushed up against you, your control of your water going off the property. That's it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sure.
Well, the obvious one is that the marijuana economy. LA just voted to rescind their ordinance banning dispensaries because the demand from the people is so great that they have to have dispensaries. The legislation, the ordinance in Willets banning dispensaries has, you know, made that source of income impossible, and I think it's prejudicial, and I think it needs to change.
Next question will go to you, Madge. What will you do as a member of the city council, if anything, to support volunteer efforts to make improvements to the city parks and other facilities?
I really believe in volunteerism. I've been a volunteer myself for the entire time I've been here in Willets, and I know a lot of other people who are dedicated volunteers, and they love Willets, and they are smart, and they really want to make improvements. So I think that we should stand behind that kind of effort. Doesn't mean it'll always be okay, but I think in general, volunteers can extend the, what staff can do. We have limited staff resources, limited money, but volunteers who are willing and able to do things, like the dog park that just got built, like the Hill Creek Trail that's being built completely by volunteers. So I think that is something I totally want to get behind. I want to give them knowledge, but encouragement and respect for their contributions to the city. I think it's very important.
Thank you very much.
And again.
That's okay. Bruce. What will you do as a member of the city council, if anything, to support volunteer efforts to make improvements to the city parks and other facilities?
Well, I guess first off, I try and be nice to my girlfriend. Linda has done, is constantly working on volunteer projects. They just finished redoing Babcock Park, her and Tom and a group of volunteers, and I think that, you know, Willets has a great history of volunteerism, whether it be, whether you belong to groups like Rotary or Seroptimus or, you know, Hospital Auxiliary, church groups. I mean, Willets is a great melting pot of a variety of people that volunteer in 100 different ways, and some of us volunteer to do this part of the business, and there are others. And I think we supply mutual encouragement to each other, and I think the city has a good history of doing that, and it has always been a, you know, a key component of us getting things done. The group that took on the planter boxes on Commercial Street when we no longer could afford to do it is just, you know, one of many examples, but volunteers, we can't praise them or be enough of a volunteer ourselves.
Thank you. Victor.
First thing I'd do is I'd try to multiply Tom Woodhouse by 10. He has done so much for the city that a lot of us have. I think the maintenance, people go by now, and they're picking up papers, and there's, it's going all over the town, and it gets contagious when people work and they start doing things. I see one gal out there, Ruth, I don't know what her last name is, but she does it for exercise. She cleans up the streets. But again, I would really like to emphasize 10 times, Woodhouse.
Sure.
I have something to volunteer right here. I just came up with this idea I call the Ping Pong Cube, and it's a facility that can be built out of cargo containers. I have the design written out, and it is a facility that can be used for a lot of different sports, like ping pong, badminton, handball, racquetball, squash, and it can be built on the sporting fields that we have established down the street here, and it is going to be a prototype that I'm going to be incorporating into my ping pong club of Willets franchise that I'm selling. Anybody who's interested in that after we meet here, you can come and talk to me. But this goes back to the kind of activities that you have in the town that help the people who live in the town to be more energetic, to be healthier, to stay out of the hospital, stay out of the doctor's office, stay out of the pharmacy, have better brain function, manage their own affairs better, manage the affairs of the city better, because that's what's lacking here. We've got poor management.
Thank you. Holly.
Can you say the question?
Yes. What will you do as a member of the city council, if anything, to support volunteer efforts to make improvements to the city parks and other facilities?
I think I have been very encouraging of volunteerism within the city for the reasons I mentioned before. We do have a lot, we have a ton of volunteer energy in this town, and some examples of when that's really worked, because we also have a lot of recreation facilities in Willets. Examples of how that's really worked has been the concession stands at the ballfields. Those were built by volunteers. Really a lovely job. The dog park, as Matt mentioned, that has been a volunteer, volunteer project, and it's just been amazing. So what I can do on the city council is to be receptive to those ideas when they come forward, to bring it to all of us, to make sure that we don't, you know, get volunteers to do something that none of us want. But I do think there have been times where we have not embraced volunteerism to the level that we could. There was a group of citizens that got together and developed a safety improvement plan for the one block, a sort of template safety improvement plan for pedestrian access in one block downtown. And when they came to the city to need city support to help back it up, there was not enough votes on the current city council to make that happen. And that volunteer group just, you know, dissipated, because they put all that energy into it, and it wasn't, I didn't feel like it was acknowledged. And so I think that that's one difference that I bring to the city council, is bringing that acceptance.
Thank you. Bruce.
What? Oh, it started down there.
Yes.
Yeah, you're keeping track of it, right?
With declining population, lost industrial base, and increasing cost for aging infrastructure, do you believe it is possible to improve local conditions, and if so, how?
I assume improve local conditions, I'm going to have to make some assumptions about what that means. You know, I do not believe that the city can continue to raise fees on the services it provides ad infinitum. I think there is, and we are very much at the threshold of what we can expect of our citizens in water and sewer rates, and we don't really have much to do about property tax rates or those sorts of things. But I think we're very much on the edge of that. Yes, I do think there is something we can do, and it's something that I bring up to the council from time to time, and it's, it's not an easy solution, but I think it's, it is, it is a way to go. And that is, we own 3,600 acres of land up at the watershed. We own 300 or 400 acres of land out in the valley as part of the wastewater plant. We need to work on ways to make those properties productive and make those create income for our community to offset the continuing push by government to raise fees and raise costs. And I think that what we can do that is to begin managing the resources that we own in those properties.
You've got to repeat that question again.
Yes. Victor. With declining population, lost industrial base, and increasing cost for local infrastructure, do you believe it is possible to improve local conditions, and if so, how?
You know, that's real scary right now at this time. You know, there's another town just yesterday that's on the verge of finding bankruptcy that's at water. They laid off one-third of their workers. They laid off half of their police force. These are tough times, and we're going to have to weather them. And I think that we do have to be smart when it comes to spending our dollars here in the city. It's going to be tough for all of us, and to think that it's not, am I on the right, I mean, I just don't have an answer for that. I'm worried about it. I'm really concerned. It's not going to be easy. There's, it's still more to come. That's it.
Okay. Sir.
Well, I wish I had a solution to that, but I think that there are really, your question puts out these fixed sort of affairs, and that's just one way of looking at it, number one. I don't really agree with that way of looking at it, because the population base and other things can change. I think it has to do with the people that are, you know, in the positions to make those kind of decisions as to how they want to deal with the, with issues we have. And one of the main things I think we need to address is that we are dependent on the money from Washington and the money from Sacramento, and we aren't really stable with our own, you know, finances in the city of Willets. And I don't think any municipality or any county is. I think down the line, we're all dependent on the federal government. And when it comes down to it, if we're $16 trillion in debt, federal government, when they take the hit, we're going to take the hit.
Thank you. Holly.
I'm going to try to get all the topics. That's a full question. I have to say, I'm surprised that our population is going down, because so many of my friends are having, I know many young families that are currently living in Willets, and it seems like everyone is having babies at the same time. I think that local investment is one of the ways that we can help support, you know, we, the city of Willets does have a budget, and the city of Willets does spend money. What Victor was saying about having local contractors, that's really important, to try to, if the city is spending money, to make sure that that money stays in our area and supports our citizens, because I really, we wouldn't be here if the citizens weren't here. And so if we don't back each other up, we're going to be in an even tighter spot. I think the growing of community is very important, so that as times get harder, we know what resources we have to use. I agree that we could have more income-raising ideas. We have really been tightening our belts at the city of Willets over the past, over my past term, certainly, and maybe even before. We've reduced our staff drastically so that everyone is having to do more, and they've stepped up amazingly. But there are things that we can do to increase more money. I don't know if I agree, I don't know if I agree about logging the watershed, but I was just recently somewhere where you could go camping up in Grass Valley. You can actually go camp at their watershed, and they get income from that, from irrigation.
Ma'am.
I think I've got the question. One area besides a lot of young families having babies, there's also a lot of retirees coming into our community. I think we can make our community more friendly and more healthy for retirees, so that's one area to kind of reverse that trend. As far as the increased infrastructure costs, I think the thing I brought up early on about more advanced planning, more long-term investment, looking at where strategically where to spend our limited dollars is very important. I do want to give credit to the current city council for keeping our belt built tight and keeping our budgets, you know, balanced, because that isn't easy in this economy. I think that's, that's very important, but when we are investing in more infrastructure, let's be really careful to prioritize that and see the things that are going to give us the greatest return as a community on those investments. And, yeah, local investment is the other thing. If we can get more local investment, more local businesses, I think that will grow the economy, and that comes back to the city in revenue as well.
Thank you. A more easy question. Okay, Victor. You might like this. What is the most significant public safety problem facing Willets, and what do you think should be done to address it?
Public safety?
What do you, what is the most significant public safety problem facing Willets, and what do you think should be done to address it?
What's going on with some of our drug situations? I think that's very serious. It's, I think the drugs problem is a real problem. There's, I don't know what the answer is. It's partially supporting our country, our country, actually, but I wish it wasn't. I think it just drags down our community. I think we need to crack down on the marijuana problems, and especially the hard drugs that are out there that are very, very serious. I think that, what can we do to stop that? We have to be more aware. You know, I hate to think that we need to hire more policemen or sheriffs and stuff to curtail us, but, you know, it's just an ongoing problem. I don't have an answer for it. If I did, I would certainly implement it if I could.
Thank you. Sir.
Yes, I think drugs are one of the main problems we have in Willets, and I'm talking about alcohol, and I'm talking about tobacco, and I'm talking about pharmaceuticals that kill more people than all of the black market drugs combined. And people who want to take drugs, find drugs to take, or they do other things to get their kicks. So to me, it's like trying to treat that on the end where people are already sick and looking for something is not the way to successfully deal with that problem. The way to deal with that problem is to teach people about how to be healthy, how to live in a way that they control their weight, their mental function, and they become productive members of society, or at least be able to take care of themselves.
Thank you. Holly, you want a question?
I would, please.
What is the most significant public safety problem facing Willets, and what do you think should be done to address it?
Okay, well, the first part, I would say drugs, specifically methamphetamine speed use, and also lack of sufficient mental health resources. Our, what I mean by that is that our police staff spends an inordinate amount of their time having to babysit mentally ill individuals, help take care of them, because those, a lot of people do not have resources in other, in other areas. So some of these folks you may see walking around downtown, and you can tell that they're having some mental health issues, but they, I think by and large, do not have the resources that they need. The city of Willets, we end up sort of de facto taking that on through our public services staff, but it's, the burden is too much for them. So I think the best solution is, would probably be partnering with the other groups in the county that are already doing work to try to stop drug abuse and to try to help mental health services. mental health services, partnering with them so that our dollars can go farther, because we're all being negatively impacted by that.
Thank you. Matt?
I had a long conversation with our chief of police, Derek Gonzalez, today. And there's a lot of problems, many of them related to drug and alcohol and substance abuse and mental illness, and our economy as well. People who are forced onto the streets because of, you know, ill health or lose their job or, I mean, there's just so many issues that are impacting the people that drop off the end, the bottom end of our economic ladder and are stuck. And we don't have the resources. We don't have the resources at the city level. We don't have the resources at the county level, probably not at the state level, probably not at the federal level. So, it's a really big problem. I do think our current city staff, and particularly our police department, is doing absolutely a phenomenal job with what they've got to work with. They're very respectful of people that are down on their luck. They are respecting people's constitutional rights to be, you know, part of the community, and still trying to protect the community from the adverse effects of those kinds of things, you know, either property values or, you know, assaulting behavior, all of those things. So, I think it's a problem that's way bigger than the city of Willets, and I think we're doing the best we can at the moment. I'm certainly open to hearing other ideas and hope that we can do even better.